I'd like to call the water and welcome everybody to the Wednesday, January fifteenth. Meet the regular town council meeting with everybody standing with me and the Budget of Allegiance, please. Budget of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilor Donovan?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Here.
Councilor St. Clair?
Here.
Councilor Blaze?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Okay, first of all, we'll start off with general public comments. You have three minutes. You get up to the mic, your name and address, please.
Can you hear me? My name is Anne Marie Swenson. I live on Goldenwood Drive and I'm a supporter of the Dogs Group. And I and a few others drafted a letter to the council which I'd like to read here tonight. And I want to let you know that we circulated it just for the last twenty-four hours and only via email. No going out looking for signatures, no phone tree, nothing like that. And I've collected a hundred and twenty-one signatures in just the last twenty-four hours. We'd like you to know that we're here, we're watching, and we just want to make sure that the ad hoc committee process is fair and unbiased. And for the record, I'd like to read the letter. It says, "We strongly encourage the Scarborough Town Council and the ad hoc committee assigned to review the issue of dogs on Scarborough beaches to slow down, take time to review all pertinent data, and make a thoughtful, fair recommendation for the future use of the towns' beaches. In October, the council made dramatic changes to the current Scarborough leash law based on a rushed decision. That prompted a special election in which almost four thousand Scarborough residents voted seventy-three to twenty-seven percent to overturn the council's decision. The day after the election, the council voted to start addressing the issue again. We're wondering when does the will of the people become the will of the people? Based on post-election events, the will of Scarborough residents is not being respected. There is room for adjustment and further compromise. However, that is not what we are getting. Instead, it feels like the same rushed process. The ad hoc committee is not comprised of the unbiased membership necessary to analyze data and make a truly objective recommendation to the council. The committee was selected in a manner such that any vote is likely to end in a four-three or five-two decision with an anti-dog bias. While it is widely acknowledged that a piping plover was killed in July two thousand thirteen by a dog, dogs rank very close to the bottom of known cases of piper ploving mortality." Known causes, I'm sorry. "In our state's thirty-two-year recorded history, dog takes represent less than one percent of piping plover mortality. There is no evidence that further restrictions on dogs will help the plovers, none. The current effort is most definitely an excuse to target dogs, not to protect the plovers. Our town is not a wildlife sanctuary. We all do the best we can, but we should do so in the context of understanding balance among all in the community. We implore the council not to repeat prior mistakes. Review the composition of the ad hoc committee vetted only by certain members of the council. Another special election to overturn a rushed biased decision is not in anyone's best interest. Education and enforcement should be the focus. Scarborough is not a town to be dominated by plovers, dogs, or any special group. Scarborough is to be enjoyed by all. Do what is right. Share Scarborough." And Toady, I'll give you a copy of this. We know these signatures are nothing formal, they're not binding, but there are a hundred and twenty-one concerned citizens that have signed this letter, again, just in the last twenty-four hours.
Thank you. Excellent.
Katie Foley, Free Lucky Lane, Scarborough. We are all human and we all make mistakes, but I believe that it's how you handle yourself in those moments that speak most to your character. In my world, you own it, you apologize, and then you try really hard not to make the same mistake again. Inevitably, you fail. Why? Because you are human. So you pick yourself up and you try again. Last week, I sent an email and asked some very tough questions of the council. Four out of seven of you responded and I thank you for those replies. I eagerly await to hear from the last three. At times, I don't always ask the right question or remember to request a reply, so here they are again, and I am requesting a reply. Number one, do the members of this council believe that the selection of the ad hoc Animal Control Advisory Committee was unbiased and fair? Number two, were you personally afforded the opportunity to provide input as to who should and who should not be on the committee? Surprisingly, I was asked and privileged to be asked to give some names. Sadly, eleven of those names were denied. I want to know why. Number three, should counselors be privately meeting with committee members? Once, twice maybe, but not eight times? Number four, why shouldn't I be allowed to communicate with Maine Audubon or to CC the town council on my correspondence with the committee? Number five, why shouldn't the committee consider the vote of the special election? The voters consist of close to four thousand citizens who are our friends, our neighbors, and our family. I don't know how to consider them, I mean, I don't know how not to consider them. There are really good people on this ad hoc committee, people who believe every bit as passionately about their position as I do mine. The difference is that their position is only looking at one single aspect, it's the protection of the plovers. Mine considers all users of the beach. Was the council's intent for this committee to create a policy to manage our beaches the same as a wildlife sanctuary? That was not my understanding. We are destined towards a four-three or five-two vote. We were from day one, and it's not the committee's fault. The truth is, we never should have been put in this position in the first place. If you wanted the town to vote on the elimination of off-leash hours in the summer, then you should call another special election. In my opinion, what you're doing is unfair and unethical. I am frustrated with continued attempts to evaluate and assess the meaning of the vote. Our message was clear: restore the balanced leash law, the law that we had. It wasn't restore the winter hours and then take away the summer at a later time. If someone voted no because they were told or believed that they could come back and eliminate the summer off-leash hours, then shame on them. They should have voted yes. They have the same access to the democratic process that we did. Let them go out and gather twenty-four hundred signatures in twenty days. Let them go out and get four thousand people to the polls for a special election. That's called democracy. We have an opportunity to correct our mistakes. Why wouldn't we do that?
Thank you.
And I'll give Toady a copy of the questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? None. Good evening. My name is Bud Hanson. I live in a condo at twenty-two Stony Creek Drive. My birthday is March fourth nineteen thirty. And I tell you that because I'm also the senior advisor for the senior board here in Scarborough. We have a great time. And I wanted to tell you about a workshop we had last August. And we were debating at the workshop, how are we going to get more members in the senior group, in the program? We were discussing advertising, we're touching new plans and so forth. In our liaison, a man named Ed Blaze was there. And Ed came up and said, "How many members do you have today?" We said, "We have three hundred and sixty." He said, "Why don't you set an objective of how many members you want to have by the end of year two thousand thirteen?" I said, "What a nice idea that is." So he said, "Well, how about maybe a hundred and fifty, I mean, four hundred and fifty or four seventy-five?" So we said, "No, we'll go for five hundred." So, at the end of December of the year, we had four hundred and eighty-nine paid members, which is ninety-seven dot eight percent of the objective. And thank you, Ed. Thank you. And so what we're going to do is give you a special title at the senior program. You're going to be vice president of inspiration. Thanks again, and we appreciate all you do. You will probably receive in the mail, if you've already received them, the new fifty-five program. It's out in the mail to all those members, and it's available to, and all the town council members will get a copy of it in your mailbox anyway. Eventually, you'll find some new things that we're trying out that's going to be very exciting. And I want to tell you that on page thirteen and fourteen, it tells you all our discounts and how to register to become a member. It doesn't cost more than ten bucks. It's pretty easy, lasts all year long. I want to thank publicly my coordinator in town here, who is Hallie Hodge, who puts this together and makes all the arrangements and talks to people and gets the programs going. We got some good programs going, and we are going to go offer the programs at the Phelps Swimming Arena down in Saco, which is a great program for especially us seniors who enjoy swimming very much. My last thoughts were, later on this year, in the spring, you will be going down to the veterans' home for town council meeting. And for those members who have never been there before, I'm thinking maybe Mr. Donovan and if you haven't been in the veterans' home, give me a call. I'll take you a pre-walk around, okay?
My father was at the veterans' home.
Oh, he was, okay. So you know what it is. We were doing probably the same thing as we did back in November two twelve, with tours, the meeting, and a special guest will be there as well. And I invite you all to come. We'll be meeting with Toady. And by contact there is Joanne Hooper, who was the administrative, you probably know her, administrative supervisor with the director, who is Maureen. I wish you all good luck. Thank you for your time. Please come and join us. If you want to take a tour, any of you, they have gone from being a very friendly place to a very friendly family place. You won't recognize it today. Wooden floors, separate dining rooms for all the divisions. It's very, very homy there now. And I like it. I am a veteran, and I'm old, and I really appreciate it. And I hope you'll have to go there one day, but that's why we'll go by. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Hey, that's the end of the public hearing, public comment. Approval of minutes of December eighteenth?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Neat.
Opposed? Items to be signed, treasurer warrants, I'll be signing them during the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to add Resolution fourteen oh one, which is urging the Maine State Legislature to preserve and restore municipal revenue sharing. And we will take that up under item eight after the update from the Wentworth Building Committee.
Okay, any others?
I'd like to propose that we take up order number fourteen oh seven, which requests an extension of the ad hoc committees, Animal Control Ad hoc Committees' work, to the twenty-ninth of January.
Okay, and that will go right after?
That will follow, it'll be the final order you consider this evening?
Final order.
Fourteen oh seven.
Non-action items, we have one. Update from Wentworth School Building Committee, Paul?
Well, good evening. My name is Paul Cozel. I reside at Four Lillian Way here in Scarborough. I'm a dad. I have two children, a seven-year-old in first grade, a twelve-year-old in the seventh grade, and I chair the Wentworth Intermediate School Building Committee. It's always a tough act following Bud Hanson after he speaks, so, but the good news is Bud serves on the committee with me, so we've worked together before. Overall, my goal tonight is to give the council an update as to where we are on the project and then to answer any questions that folks may have. To be frank, I only have good news to talk about. The project is moving along well. The project is seventy percent complete at this point in time. The project is on time and on schedule, and the project is on budget. As far as the project itself is concerned, we are just over a year at this point as far as construction is concerned. We started in the fall. We have approximately three hundred workdays into the project. On a daily basis, we have about eighty workers on site, which is a very large number. To date, there have only been ten change orders as far as the project is concerned. The building at present time is enclosed and generating its own temporary heat. Some classrooms and nearby bathrooms on the Quentin Drive side of the school are nearly complete. We've selected an artist for the school signature piece. The geothermal system, which was a big budget item, is currently installed but not fully hooked up. And site work continues. We've had some inclement weather over the past few weeks, but fortunately with the holidays, it hasn't impacted the project. It's been more an issue of snow removal than anything. So overall, the project is moving along fine. Our contingency budget was established at about two million dollars back at the time of the project. I'm happy to report that we've used just a little over half of that to date, which represents about four and a quarter percent of our total construction budget and just a little over three percent of our project budget. This is a good indicator for us, being seventy-five percent complete, that we're just not in trouble. It's running fine. Until just before the holidays, we had two large ticket items still unresolved. The first one concerned the furnishings, and when we put our bid together, put our budget together, this was essentially a placeholder. There was no significant detail given to that. I'm happy to report as far as furnishings are concerned, our budget with real furniture in there has come just in under budget. We now have that out to bid, and we expect that to be fine. As far as our technology is concerned, anything from computers to phones to security systems, we had a million dollars budget for that. Hard numbers are coming in, and that looks to be coming in under budget. So, that to me was sort of the last remaining piece of the project that had not really been touched, and it has now been touched, and I feel very comfortable about it. As with any construction project, not everything runs as smoothly as you would like it to. We have had one large issue present itself, and this concerned the technology and the infrastructure. We had a very qualified technology subcommittee as far as our project is concerned. They did a phenomenal job. In most school projects, again, this just becomes a line item, that becomes a percentage of the project. This group of volunteers really delved right into it and came up with a very comprehensive list of what we need in the new school. Regrettably, there was a disconnect between the subcommittee and the architect, and four hundred thousand dollars worth of infrastructure was missed as far as being part of the building, construction part of the project. That has now been addressed. That is now within that contingency money that I've talked to you about. So despite having that four hundred thousand dollar hit, that is still keeping our contingency just at about fifty percent. So again, you know, things are running well under the project. I think if we look at other school projects around the state, there are always issues of steel not matching up, concrete issues and things of that. None of that has taken place on this project. As far as schedule, from day one, we talked about having kids in there for the fall of two thousand fourteen. That is on track. We expect it substantial completion this summer. We expect the move into the new school to take place at that point in time. That, of course, is going to be a coordination effort, but nonetheless, we're going to get it done. The coordination for this has already begun. We've done certain things over the last couple of summers as far as addressing the asbestos in the school, getting that out so that when it comes time for the demolition this summer, it's one less thing to take place. Mrs. Dexter has been working with staff of tossing and cleaning in anticipation of this move so that when it comes time to move, not only, so that we're only addressing the moving, we're not worrying about the cleaning as well. The other part of the coordination is just getting everything ready. We've selected a moving company to assist with this, and we're just going to be ready. The last part of my comments I want to make tonight is about our team overall. I've been in construction now for a little over ten years. I've been a practicing attorney for over twenty-five years, and I really have to take my hat off to the construction team that we have here, their top shelf. The contractor is a main contractor. This is, I was explaining to Bud Hanson about this earlier, this is the largest project that he has ever done. This is his flagship project. And I will tell you, there are no issues. You walk on that project site, there is no trash. Subcontractors are kept on a tight rein. Just a stellar job. Our architect, I had mentioned ten change orders. The reason we only have ten change orders is because the plans are tight. Our owner's representative has done a great job, and our other consultants have done a great job. But more importantly, I have to take my hat off to some of our own people. The school's facility manager, Todd Jepson, has been on that project every single day. No better place for him to be since ultimately that school and its operations will be his responsibility. He understands where all the parts and pieces lie. Mrs. Dexter's done a great job coordinating her staff as far as getting them ready for the move, working with the children on the smaller playground. And then Mrs. Sizemore's done an outstanding job as far as being involved with this project, handling a lot of the administration associated with it. So overall, I take my hat off to all these folks. Without them, this project would not be the success it's been today. As I said, there's only good news to report about this project, and I don't really want to say much more because I don't want to jinx it, because we are at seventy percent. But assuming things go forward and continue the way they are, we should have a great school open for the kids come fall of next year. Those are my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council that people may have.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say I was lucky enough, I think it was early fall, to go on a tour of the building. And I can only reiterate everything that you just said. I've been on numerous construction sites, and it was spotless. They are clearly running a tight ship over there, and the building itself is beautiful. It's something to be extremely proud of. And your team, like you said, I can't say enough good things about it. It was just, we're lucky to have access to a school like that. Our kids are going to be very lucky to go to school there. And I just want to say that I'm very impressed with what you guys pulled off. And talk about a team, that was, from how hard you guys have worked to pull that school together from the beginning, it's just impressive. So I just want to say, great job, and it's beautiful, and I can't wait to see the finished product.
Thank you.
I've got one question, just to make sure I'm clear and perhaps others have the same question. You mentioned that four and a thousand dollar issue that's been dealt with, and you characterize it as infrastructure, but also in the context of technology, that is more cabling and all the stuff behind the scenes to support the technology. Is that correct?
That's correct. The disconnect on this, when the technology group sat down and they said infrastructure, when they say infrastructure, they mean servers, and they mean things that can be moved out of the building. When the architect and the contractor say infrastructure, they mean things in the walls that, when you move out, it stays behind. So there was frankly just a misinterpretation as to the definition of infrastructure. Again, it was a misstep. So that's where the issue lies. The upside of the whole thing is, you know, we found it out, we've addressed it, and number two, it's not a case of something happening that we paid for and didn't get. It just was never in the project to begin with. So we found it and have addressed it. And frankly, that represents, you know, that three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars represents forty percent of the contingency expenditure. And again, that's why I say that I think the project's in good shape, because there just hasn't been a lot of problems.
Just a final question, if I could. I was pleased to hear from Todd Jepson, the facilities director, that some of the items of the old Wentworth School will be salvaged and used in other school facilities, some of the K-two schools. Lighting comes to mind in particular, because I know we did some really good lighting upgrades. Those fixtures are still, are still very usable. Do you have a salvage contractor that's going to take the rest, or how's it going to work before demolition occurs? Because I have had local businesses inquire whether there's any items. I'd hate to see things landfillled that could have a productive, useful life somewhere else if we don't have a use for them.
I don't have the specific information, but what I remember from the spec is that we would have identified items that we would have pulled out of the school to save. And then what happens is when the project goes out to bid, the site contractor or who then isn't responsible for the demolition and has a demolition contractor come in, and they take all that stuff.
Do they landfill it, or is there some productive use for it, depending on what the item is?
There's probably a productive use for the salvage contractor, that they will do something as far as selling it. But as far as a benefit to the town or to some of the businesses, we can't explore that. I don't remember the specifics of what was identified, but, for example, we have talked, you know, some of the older furniture, you know, potentially donating that. Some of that is in fact going to be moved up to the new school, you know, some of the tables, not the desks, some of the carts, some of the more recent purchases, but we can explore that further with you.
Yeah, I was thinking more, the questions that have come to me have to do more with the high-efficiency lighting that was put into that school two or three or four years ago that I think still is productive.
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. I'll check with Todd later.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be one of the adjustments to the agenda. I'll have, pardon? Oh, I was going to have counsel, Katrina Rita.
Okay. Yeah, Resolution fourteen oh one urging the Maine State Legislature to preserve and restore municipal revenue sharing. Be it resolved by the town council of the town of Scarborough, Maine, in town council assembled that whereas for over forty years, the state of Maine has reserved approximately five percent of sales tax receipts from retail sales in Maine's towns and cities to stabilize the property tax burden and support the local governmental services provided on behalf of the state by municipalities, which under the law are subdivisions of state government, the municipal sharing, excuse me, the municipal revenue sharing program. And whereas for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, Governor LaPage proposed a state budget that would have eliminated the municipal revenue sharing program and misappropriated all of the sales tax receipts in the municipal revenue sharing program's local government fund for the state government's use. And whereas, excuse me, the compromised state budget adopted by the Maine State Legislature preserved the municipal revenue sharing program, but nonetheless reallocated to the state treasury tens of millions of dollars previously designated for municipalities under thirty A Maine revised statutes, section five sixty-eight. And whereas the state's last-minute cuts to the municipal revenue sharing program for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen and fiscal year two thousand fifteen biennial budget through municipal budgets for fiscal year two thousand fourteen into disarray, necessitating draconian budget cuts, layoffs, and tax increases in towns and cities across the state. And whereas the fiscal year two thousand fifteen component of the state's biennial budget will further reduce municipal revenue sharing for municipalities for fiscal year two thousand fifteen from its original statutory level of one hundred forty-six million dollars to sixty million dollars, and threaten to effectively eliminate the program with additional reductions of forty million dollars in the event the state is unable to adopt budget amendments that reduce state tax expenditures and/or implement other savings by that amount. And whereas the impact to Scarborough of repeated reductions in municipal revenue sharing has been significant, with a projection for fiscal year two thousand fifteen representing only seventeen point seven percent of what it was in fiscal year two thousand nine, a total dollar loss of one million, one hundred eighteen, three hundred, excuse me, two hundred thirty dollars, the majority of which directly resulting in increases to the regressive local property tax. And whereas the legislature's Tax Expenditure Review Task Force has worked diligently between legislative sessions to address the anticipated forty million dollar shortfall in the state budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, identifying state tax expenditure reductions and other savings in legislative resolve two seven two one. And whereas legislative resolve two seven two one is now pending before the legislature's appropriation committee for its consideration. And whereas the legislature's adoption of state tax expenditure reductions or other budget savings and the preservation of the municipal revenue sharing program that such savings would accomplish are vital to Maine's towns and cities as they prepare for yet another difficult budget process. to Maine's towns and cities as they prepare for yet another difficult budget process. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Town Council in Town Council assembled as follows, that it is of critical importance that the legislature preserve the municipal revenue sharing program so as to avoid further reductions in municipal services and further increases in property taxes. And that the Town Council strongly endorses the efforts of the legislature's Tax Expenditure Review Task Force to identify tax expenditure reductions or other state budget savings to close the forty million dollar gap in the state's fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget. And that the Town Council calls upon the Appropriations Committee and the legislature to adopt legislation to fully fund the forty million fiscal year two thousand fifteen state budget gap and thereby forestall further cuts in the municipal revenue sharing program. And that the Town Council urges local legislative delegation to support the preservation and indeed, the restoration of full funding of the rev, of the municipal revenue sharing program, signed and dated this fifteenth day of January two thousand fourteen, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilor Katrina. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution fourteen oh one?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? It's a vote. Okay, uh, do I?
Just as an aside, I believe one, perhaps the Chair and, and Councilor Katrina, uh, may well offer testimonies to the Appropriations Committee next week.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, on Wednesday, um, I will be going to Augusta with, um, Chair Sullivan and we will be testifying before the Appropriations Committee on behalf of the twenty thousand citizens of Scarborough, Maine.
As long as it doesn't snow.
Oh!
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I think it'd be also appropriate to note that we did meet with the, uh, delegation, the Scarborough Legislative Delegation, uh, and made the points that were made in this resolution. Uh, and we feel very strongly, as do many other towns, that these are monies that were legislated as, uh, appropriate for municipalities because municipalities have no other means other than the regressive property tax to raise revenue. And this is a combination of sale, sales and income tax so that it provides a modest amount of balance to the way in which towns have to pay their bills. And so when that money is taken away from, uh, the municipalities, it puts us under tremendous pressure and unpredictability in our budgets. And we're committed to, uh, making an effort to, uh, protect the citizens of the town in the manner in which, uh, we've had very unstable revenue streams in recent years.
Thank you. Yeah, last year was very, very unpredictable. We weren't sure where we were going because of the holdup of the state. Um, is there another council that would like to comment?
Just my comment is, um, I would hope and wish that the state could kind of pull their act together a little bit. We keep getting slammed as a community on both ends. We lose our money in our revenue sharing. We lose our money over in our schools and ninety-nine percent of your tax increase in the four years I have been here is due to making up those shortfalls. Um, so as this continues, this is something, you know, we need to be watching carefully and I certainly applaud and thank Jan Marie and, and Richard for going up there on our behalf as a community to advocate for our lack of funds. I mean, we pay these funds, that money is still being paid, your sales taxes, all these other things is money that you're still getting to have to pay and then we're in reducing you on the other end too. So, um, thank you for going up.
Um, of, uh, seven years on this council, I've heard the legislature, our state government, promise and promise, "We're going to fix the problem, we're going to fix the problem." Um, it hasn't been fixed and it continues on and, uh, you know, uh, Scarborough pays quite a bit into the state and what we get back is not, is anywhere as near as much. So, um, it's time to start fighting, uh, for this town and, and the precious resources and funding that we deserve. And, um, this is a nonpartisan issue and it's got to be dealt with um, because we can't keep going up on property taxes like we have. Okay, let me get back on track here. Okay, I need, um, motion on order thirteen ninety-seven.
Move approval?
Could I make a comment, please?
Yes, yes.
Uh, this order and order fourteen oh one at the request of the toll enforcement office, they would like to have these two items tabled. So there would be no public hearing held this evening. And, uh, they ask that it could be tabled until the issues are, are resolved.
Any? That would be order thirteen ninety-seven and fourteen oh one, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Most of the table.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
All in favor? Any opposed?
They, they table until the next meeting?
Until the issues are resolved.
Until the issues are resolved. Okay. Do we have a motion on order fourteen oh two?
Actually, a public hearing.
And public hea, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we'll do a public hearing on the, uh, is there anyone that would like to speak on the order fourteen oh two? License for, food handles license for Tim Hortons. Can I see anybody? Okay.
Like to move a... Yeah, I'd like to move approval for...
Move approval, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, I, I just have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This outfit's been in business for how many years? And it says in the documentation, this is initial license.
It's a new, it's a new owner.
It's a new owner.
New owner.
New management.
Tim doesn't own it anymore, huh?
No.
He's owned it for a while.
I'm sorry. Um, all, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Under Old Business, uh, um, order fourteen oh three. Yes, thanks.
Order number fourteen oh three is act on the names posted to the various committees and boards as recommended by the Appointments Committee on Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. Would you like me to read them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Um, and this is in a form of a motion to move William Frothingham Junior, the first alternate to a full voting member on the Board of Assessment and Review with a term to expire in two thousand fifteen. Coastal Waters and Harbor Advisory Committee posts the name of Chris Rule to be reappointed as a full voting member on the Coastal Waters and Harbor Committee with a term to expire in two thousand sixteen. Post the name of Art Dillon to be reappointed as a full voting member on the Community Services and Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire in two thousand sixteen. Post the name as, as full voting members on the Conservation Commission, Chris Herrick and Peter Slavinsky as a reappointment for a full voting member with terms to expire in two thousand sixteen. And the name of Sean Flaherty to be appointed as a full voting member with a term to expire in two thousand fourteen. Post the name of Sandy Duragi as a full voting member for the Energy Committee with a term to expire in two thousand sixteen. Move Craig Frederick from first alternate and Becky Delaware, second alternate, to full voting members on the Historic Preservation Ad Hoc Advisory Committee with terms to expire in two thousand sixteen. Name of Craig Frederick and Brian Shumway for reappointment as full voting members on the Housing Alliance with terms to expire in two thousand sixteen. And the names of Suzanne Foley Ferguson and Douglas Williams for reappointment as full voting members on the Parks and Conservation Land Board with terms to expire in two thousand sixteen. Appoint Sean Flaherty as a full voting member with a term to expire in two thousand fourteen. Terry Eddy for reappointment as full voting member on the Pest Management Advisory Committee with a term to expire in two thousand sixteen. Post the name of, as full voting members on the Planning Board of Ronald Mazer for reappointment as a full voting member and the term to expire in two thousand sixteen. To move John Dupont from a first alternate to a full voting member with a term to expire in two thousand fifteen. And move Nicholas McGee from second alternate to first alternate with a term to expire in two thousand sixteen. I'd like to post the name of Susan Ogless as a second alternate with a term to expire in two thousand sixteen. Move Brian Young from first alternate to a full voting member on the Senior Program Advisory Board with a term to expire in two thousand fifteen. And post the name of Judy Roy as the Long Rage Planning Representative to the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. God bless Judy.
Discussion.
Second.
Pose a motion.
She's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Check.
Discussion. See and none, all in favor?
Under New Business, order number fourteen oh four is act on the request to accept roundabout drive, including for the purposes of confirmation and clarification, all portions of said roundabout drive previously accepted by the Town Council pursuant to Title twenty-three of the Maine Revised Statute, subsection thirty twenty-five, and the requirements of section four of the Scarborough Street ordinance except, acceptance ordinance, sorry, and, and as recommended by the Town Engineer.
Could I just provide some quick words of introduction? You were provided a memo from the Town Engineer who's here this evening and some other material, but in a nutshell, this is cleanup. Uh, roundabout drive, for all intents and purposes, has been used, viewed, maintained as though it's a public road. Um, through some work, um, involving actually the Land Trust initially, it was determined that a portion anyway of, of roundabout drive was never formally accepted by, uh, this council. So this just intends to clean up that piece. Uh, and really what it does is it paves the way for, I believe, what, what it ended up being about two point nine acres that will be combined with the state of Maine landholding, which is the Scarborough Marsh, uh, in conservation. So it's a bit of a circuitous route. It's actually a very simple and straightforward matter of street acceptance that's in front of you. Should you have questions further, Jeremy Winterstein is here from the Land Trust. Uh, but that's kind of a, a side conversation. It's not really the pertinent thing before you this evening.
Okay, now, motion on the order? Move approval?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Any discussion? No discussion, uh, all in favor?
Sure, thank you.
Opposed?
Order number fourteen oh five is act on the request from the Shellfish Conservation Commission to approve the allocations for the licenses to two thousand fourteen.
Do we have anybody to speak on that or?
I'm, I'm not aware. Is anyone here from the Shellfish Commission?
Yeah.
Would you like to? Tim, do you want, do you need this? Are you, do you know it off the top of your head? You probably do.
Just to explain the licenses.
Tim Downs, forty-four Jones Creek Drive. Um, I'm Vice Chair of the Shellfish Committee. Uh, previous meeting, we, uh, decided to allocate a certain number of licenses. What we have done is we've increased the licenses for the resident commercial licenses. We went from twenty-nine to thirty, um, on our over sixty commercial licenses. We had previously issued three of the licenses. This year, we're suggesting that we issue just one of them because there was two of the diggers that did not, uh, do their conservation work and we just figured, uh, that it would be more useful to put a regular commercial license out there. There's more of a demand for that. The non-resident commercial licenses, those remain the same at four. The student commercial licenses, that remains the same at ten. The non-resident student commercial license, that remains the same as one. By state statute, we're required to have ten percent at least that goes to non-residents. So that's why we have the non-resident licenses in there. The resident recreational licenses, that stays at two hundred. The non-resident recreational licenses stay at twenty. And the day permits, they're ten a day. Um, we had a lot of discussion about the numbers of the licenses. The shellfish stock out there is in a, it's decreased greatly. There's not a lot of seed out there or anything. The crabs, they've, it's stayed in the stock that we have, um, all the predators, the worms, the crabs, everything. So, um, we feel like we were really being generous as just far as issuing that one other license when actually we should have a process of attrition going in, start taking them away. The future looks pretty bleak, um. But that's where they stand and that's what we hope that you will accept and move those numbers to Augusta and do what we gotta do. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them if I can. Been doing this forty-something years, but I don't know what no one does.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
How, um, how long has it been since these, uh, fees have been reviewed?
Well, the fees are part of the scheduled fees, so technically they're adopted every year with the adopted budget. Um, I don't recall specific conversation in recent years about the shellfish fees directly. I'm looking down at, uh, Councilor Hobrook who's been there at least three years.
I don't, off the top of my head, recall an increase in the fee schedule, but, um, I guess if I may, I would certainly respect, um, former Councilor Downs who's been a shellfish man for quite a while. Um, I would accept their opinion as being reasonable for what they are. I would think if they had a concern that, that was perhaps not enough, um, that they would have a suggestion to, to increase that. We're, we're talking, you know, backbreaking labor for, you know, what do you get, a dollar ninety-nine a pound at best? I, I, yeah. I mean, it, I, I just lost my page, but, I mean, the fees are, you know, they're a couple of hundred for, for a license. So, I mean, I'm certainly comfortable with it and they're comfortable with it, but, I mean, we could, you know, have a conversation about it, but, but I am comfortable with it, so.
Did you have something else you were going to add?
No.
Okay. Any other discussions, anyone? Okay, um, all those in favor? Opposed?
Just, I'm sorry, it just occurred to me. I, I hadn't had this in front of me. I, I really think the fundamental thing you did this evening was the allocation of licenses. Fees is on as part of the conversation. I think that technically the fees are adopted when you adopt the fee schedule. So there's time for the Finance Committee, um...
I put that on just as information. I know in the past people have asked.
And these allocations actually go to the state for review and they're the one of the ultimate approvers, but it does require a municipal step and that's what's this evening. So the fee issue, I think, is still an open one. You're both on Finance Committee. I expect that will be an issue that comes up and perhaps shouldn't...
I was just curious as to whether they've been reviewed by the committee, that's it.
Okay, um...
Okay, uh, order number fourteen oh six is act on the request to approve the council goals for two thousand fourteen.
Hey, Todd?
Want me to go through them?
Yeah.
Yes, the council, uh, the council is aware, met, um, in a workshop setting last Wednesday and went through the annual goal-setting process, uh, and, uh, came up with, I don't know, the total number, twelve or thirteen here. And so let me just go down through them. Uh, these are not listed or am I speaking to them in order of priority? The council did not prioritize. Uh, so the first is responsible budgeting. And underneath that notion, um, is created, uh, conservative assumptions, have a plan for the worst, review fees and fines, the expectation is for flat funding, uh, so same funding as this current fiscal year, and also stable tax rate, advocate for Scarborough with the legislature, and a focus on capital budgeting. Next is senior services. Uh, the notions there are partnerships and enhancing and expanding programming, workforce housing, another initiative, uh, business friendly permitting and a business focus overall involving town departments, SEDCO, Bi-Local, Scarborough Chamber, adopting a whatever it takes mentality and attitude, streamlining permitting and approval processes, review of standards and requirements, and a focus on home-based businesses. Next is improved communications, both internal among council members and external using the resources that we have, our website, the Local Access TV, e-newsletter, potentially tax bill inserts. Uh, next is, uh, the revised flood maps and to do our part to educate residents on what's happening and what the impact is. Next would be encourage the school department to adopt an employee incentive program. Also historic preservation, uh, which would be renewing the current ad hoc committee and really putting together an action plan with the work they've done to date. Also, uh, there was the idea, a goal of sharing services and privatization to gain efficiencies. There's a goal for enforcement regarding zoning and building codes. A goal, uh, regarding, uh, an independent town-wide revaluation. A goal for ongoing dialogue with our legislative delegation. A goal to encourage com, uh, committees of the council to, uh, report their activity. A goal to encourage com- uh, committees of the council to, uh, report their activities through minutes, um, and really encourage transparency of, of those, uh, uh, the workings of those groups. And lastly, long-range facility planning.
Great, thank you, Tom. Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second. Discussion.
I think the one that the, uh, committee really universally embraced was the need for responsible budget managing. It really, uh, stood out to me at least. I also thought, and I had this feeling shared by a number of other people on the council, that it is very difficult to set a flat expenditure budget. This, that is a pretty austere step to take. Uh, uh, I see this as a long-term project that over the next five years, I hope we can maintain or achieve complete tax stability so that we know what our revenues are. Uh, uh, I think, I went home and the next day, the one thing I woke up saying was, I hate the idea that this might lead to layoffs. And that just killed me to think about that. Uh, but we've been put in an impossible situation as a town for years now with a reduced revenue, uh, and as a consequence, we've been tightening our belt and this is going to be another belt tightening year. Uh, and my hope is that we don't lose too much revenue because if we did have a flat budget, uh, and we lose revenue as we expect we will, then that means we'll still deliver a tax increase, uh, uh, to taxpayers. And I've heard from so many people how unacceptable that is. Uh, so, uh, it's a long-term project because I don't think any of us want to undermine the departments that, uh, are actually involved with the, uh, this expenditure money. Uh, they've, uh, every time you turn around and you look as a new councillor, you can't help but be impressed by the sophistication of our various departments. It's really remarkable in our school system. So no one wants to undo what has been so meticulously developed, but there is this point that we've reached where enough is enough in terms of being able to absorb tax increases. So that's a, this is a tough one for, this was a tough one for me, but it was necessary.
I think if, uh, I have to back, um, bill up with a statement of, it's gonna be basically what are your needs and not what are your wants. I think we're gonna be basically going back to wh- what do you need to get the job done? That's, it's gonna be basic.
Any other comments? Oh, tell some, Karen?
I, I, I would just say, I agree with what, uh, councillor Donovan has said. I too, uh, after leaving that meeting was like, wow, you know, that's, it's pretty tough as a, as a councillor to say we're gonna have a flat, flat increase, uh, in budgeting, uh, 'cause I know that that's really, really tough to do. Um, I'm hoping that it doesn't lead to layoffs of personnel because as a business person myself, I know the important resource, most important resource in my business are the people, uh, that I depend on. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping, um, optimistic we can work, uh, with the, uh, various town departments, uh, to hold the line. And in the meantime, as you noted through the introduction of, of this sentiment for the state legislature, we're gonna start pushing back a little bit against, with our state legislative delegation, 'cause they need to understand that what they're doing in Augusta is negatively impacting us in Scarborough. And we're, we're down to bare bones. When I did my little tour as a new councillor of the various, uh, um, buildings and departments and whatever, it's, it's amazing, uh, what we are able to do on the shoestring budgets that we have. And I know there are people in town who think, oh, we've got all this money, but if you would spend some time like I did and visit the various departments and, and see what people are doing and making do without, you would be amazed. So, uh, that's where I'm coming from, uh, with this budget.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? To vote? Okay, uh...
Order...
Yep, we'll go ahead.
Order number fourteen oh seven is act on the request to extend the timeframe in which the ad hoc control advisory committee, which was established by resolution thirteen oh seven, has to make its recommendations and report a course of action or actions to the town council from January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, to January twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, at which time the committee shall cease to exist unless otherwise extended by the town council.
Councillor Donovan, would you like to comment on?
Yes, certainly, and I'll, I'll comment a little more. I'll give an update, uh, on the ad hoc committee work, uh, of when we cover our, uh, committees. But, uh, in terms of this, uh, we have scheduled three more meetings. Uh, we've already held, I think, four or...
Four.
Four meetings so far, uh, and, uh, lengthy, intense, and, uh, uh, our expectation is that we will deliver a report, uh, based upon this extension, that three more meetings should allow us to get it done.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion. Councillor Katerina first?
I have, uh, attended three of the four meetings. I wasn't able to make the very first organizational meeting and I've sit and I've listened and I think that, um, this committee's been working very hard. Uh, I certainly appreciate the time of the volunteers in this committee and I appreciate the time and the effort of the, the people in the dogs group, um, who've also been there on a regular basis and watching and, um, just being there. Um, and as a result, I think that it makes sense to extend the time. I know I originally voted with, uh, councillor St. Clair when she, uh, thought we should have a little bit more time, um, as long as they're doing the work, I'm willing to give them the time.
Um, councillor Obera?
Uh, and again, you know, I echo, uh, Jim Marie's thought, I support her giving a little more time in going into February. Um, I was just curious as to, um, we're going from January twenty-first to, oh, I read it wrong, so never mind, that's why. I was wondering why we wouldn't give the extra week or so for the first meeting in February, but, um, my question, my only question is, is, um, you're really only extending it by about a week. Um, are you fairly confident with that timeframe or, uh, my, my question is, is 'cause our original thought when we moved to, moved it the last time was to allow enough time to go into the second meeting in February from the council. So rather than coming back again and maybe asking for another stint, maybe we should, you know, just give you the extra two weeks to begin with.
Exactly.
We're, uh, I'm very confident that we'll, we will complete our work, uh, with three more meetings, uh, and that, uh, we've made some, uh, good progress. And so because, uh, uh, the committee has put in such an intense effort, we are well along on the curve of progress, so I think that's, it's quite a satisfactory schedule.
I, like, just have to, um, echo councillor Holbrook. I have concerns, I had concerns about it, um, in the beginning, that I was worried that we were trying to fit too much, too much work into a, a short amount of time. Uh, I still think that. Um, my hope all along has been to get an entire full package, um, when this comes back. I think everybody wants to see this, I don't, I'm not sure wrapped up is the correct terminology of it, um, 'cause I think it's gonna, my personal view is that it's gonna be an ongoing situation, um, but I would like to see it wrapped up and presented all in one, um, bundle. I mean, I, I'm not, I've attended a couple of the ad hoc committee meetings. I'm impressed with the amount of work that these people have done. I don't think anybody, until you're really in it, I don't think people realize how much work there is to it. There's a lot of pieces that have to fit together, um, and there's a lot of different views on it and I, I, I know I've said this a couple of times, I'm impressed with the entire committee. I'm impressed with Tom. Um, none of them have an easy job. Um, I, I don't think, again, I don't think any of us realized how, um, that, how much there was gonna go into this. Um, but I am still concerned that we're rushing. Um, but I'm going to, um, have faith that councillor Donovan, who's the, who is the one out of all of us that is, um, knee-deep in this, um, if he thinks that they can complete the package by then, um, then there's not really much more for me to do. Uh, sorry, I'm just still struggling with that. But anyway, um, if you think councillor Donovan that we can do it, then I say that we should probably move forward with that date and then I'm vo- I would like to vocally say that if there, if you need more time, then you hundred percent would have my support on that. I don't wanna see this rushed. I don't wanna make that mistake again.
It, I mean, it's an intense subject...
Absolutely.
Uh, and people are putting in, in and dedicating a tremendous amount of time...
Yeah.
...to, uh, studying it.
Yeah.
And I think there's, there, there comes a limit...
Yes, I...
...for committee members.
Hundred, uh, yeah. I have...
Uh, which, uh, while, you know, nothing's certain in life, we could have snowstorms that would wipe out any of these three meetings, but the expectation is we are going to make, uh, progress towards completing the task.
And just for, just so that maybe people at home that are trying to kind of follow this whole process, can you just briefly, like, maybe describe what you're gonna come back with as an answer? Not, not a, not, I don't wanna know what, where you are. I just want people to understand what section of this you're working on right now. Does that make sense? 'Cause you know how it's sort of like two different, it's two different topics.
Uh, yeah, let me, let me outline, uh, where we are. Uh, for the last several meetings, we've been, uh, working on, uh, what sort of ordinance amendment would be appropriate for, uh, plover protection. Uh, and this is the, really the summer season, in-season, uh, uh, April through, uh, September first, uh, of, uh, the year at the beach, at these three beaches, that are the public beaches that we're, we're addressing. So that's been, uh, a very intense subject of discussion and analysis. Uh, uh, we spent a lot of time in preparation to discuss it, literally, uh, dozens of hours by people reading the materials. We, Mr. Hall, uh, set up a structure whereby all of the materials that were relevant were being submitted as rapidly as possible in December. That way, they were all copied and made available to people, uh, put online, uh, and as a consequence, people came to the meetings, uh, on January sixth, ninth, and thirteenth to roll up their sleeves, prepared to work. Uh, they were already well-informed on the issues. The people on the committee are already well-informed. These are highly capable people, uh, and so as a consequence, uh, uh, a lot of the work is done between the meetings. When, when, when people are doing analysis and studying and, uh, back and forth sharing information that's relevant, testing ideas, uh, uh, against, uh, what is good practice here. So a lot of work has been put in. Uh, we are now, I think, nearing the end of the review of the plover process and we will be moving to what are the rules that should be appropriate for the off-season? The, the late fall, uh, the, uh, winter and the early spring, uh, for the beaches. Uh, following that, we'll also deal with the other risks that are, that plovers are exposed to. We've been dealing with things like, uh, uh, kites and fireworks, and so all of those are going to be, uh, dealt with. But we've already discussed those, uh, so we have a pretty good sense of where we're going, at least I do, on, on most all of those. Uh, we then have properties that are public properties that are away from the beach for which, uh, uh, dog access would be recognized, off-leash dog access being the principal issue that's involved here. Because most of our parks, I think virtually all of our parks and our land trust properties already permit dogs, uh, uh, pretty free rein on all those properties. And so we expect that we'll be addressing those issues. So we have, uh, those to remain, but I think those are gonna go pretty fast. So I, I don't think they're gonna be a holdup, so that's, uh, that's what's in front of us. But I know, I think a number of them are gonna proceed in pretty rapid fashion and we'll probably get, you know, a, a, a very strong consensus out of this group on most all of those issues. Would be my expectation.
Great. And on a side note, um, Tom, something too that we might wanna think about is, I would be interested in some of that literature on, um, the fireworks issue. Um, that's something that has, I'm starting to get because of the ordinance, some, some questions about that, um, and how that plays into stuff that's happening on the beach. So at some point, it'd be good to maybe possibly discuss that further with, um, and, and get your input because I think you're getting a lot of that feedback on it and I think that we can apply that probably to some other places. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
I've been thinking.
Well, Holbrook?
As you're talking, I'm sitting there and I'm thinking. Although, I, I will say of, of the seven members on that committee, on the ad hoc committee, I have only heard from one member that there were feelings of overwhelmed as far as time, timetable. Um, not that they were scared of the work or, or shirking the duties of it, but there were some feelings of being overwhelmed, it was a lot of paperwork and, and whatnot. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to amend and here's my thought. My motion would be to move the deadline to, I'm looking at my calendar, sorry, second meeting would be the nineteenth and you need a couple of days for the agenda stuff, so I would move it to February twelfth. That's an additional week on, onto what you have. And my thought behind this was, not that I'm, you know, well, that's my motion. Let me put it out there first and then I'll...
Like to second, please.
Okay.
Yeah, motion to second.
Second. My thought is behind this, that you could put perhaps a couple more days in between those. I know you're saying your goal was for three more meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a handful more days in between those meetings, um, to allow for committee members to digest their materials a, a little bit more. Um, but that would put us still back to my, you know, original, that's two weeks into February, that still allows for the other segment, which is why it is a condensed process. Um, no matter how you place it, and I, I go back to this, whether we have to have our due process on our end if we move forward with something. Whatever the something is, is irrelevant, but there's a due process for us and a timetable, so that still gives us our window for first reading, public hearing, but gives them a little more time to breathe in between their meetings. Um, so that would allow for two more, a total of two more weeks. Um, so that's, that's it.
Yeah, I have to agree.
Councillor Donovan?
A lot of times, you're, uh, able to accomplish your goal because you set a strict deadline, uh, and you work towards it and you make it work. Uh, I would say in this case, that's probably going to be the case, that we will have fully debated all of these issues. But not to say that much is lost by, uh, extending it to the fifteenth, the twelfth of February.
Yes.
My thought is, we're not gonna cancel meetings that are scheduled. We're gonna continue to pursue this in a way that, uh, seeks to wrap up the matter by January, uh, the twenty-ninth. Uh, I think that, uh, people have been working towards that exceedingly hard and have that expectation. Whether the date is set as the twenty-ninth or February twelfth, I think we'll still work towards the twenty-ninth, but it will certainly save us the need to come back and request an extension, uh, beyond the twenty-ninth. In the event we need a wrap-up meeting, I'd appreciate Tom's, uh, thoughts on, uh, on that.
I certainly serve at the pleasure of the, the group. We do have three meetings scheduled, but I, I didn't kinda pose later dates. I didn't wanna, um, project out that much further. We could, but again, I'll, I think it's the committee that needs to direct, uh, that in, uh, in that regard. What we could do, should the work get wrapped up with some time at the back end before this, uh, February twelfth date, uh, there's some drafting time in terms of preparing the materials and reports. Uh, and if we have time, maybe even drafting some ordinance amendment language, uh, which will speed up the process with council. Um, I, I've had a fear all along that our report will be fairly, uh, simple and direct, just in terms of time. But this may give us time to flush that out a bit further and have the committee certainly have input and review and approve that before it comes to the council.
Counselor Caterina.
I know I've said this before, I'm a former high school teacher, so I'm usually pretty strict on when papers are due. Um, that being said, I mean, I can understand, you know, when you have a deadline, that you work very hard towards that and attempt to meet it. And I've certainly seen more than a good faith effort from this committee to do the right thing. Uh, I would favor moving the deadline to February twelfth for all of the, um, um, uh, arguments that have been put forth here, rather than having to go back to the well again to say, oh, can we move it again? Can we move it again? I'd rather keep it at February twelfth and then really hold to that February twelfth for the very reason that, um, otherwise people keep asking for extensions. But I do think there's a lot more. It's a very involved, um, discussion. Um, not only are we talking about the beaches, but we've, as a council, have asked this ad hoc committee to really look at the big picture. And I know the, uh, whole plover protection is a, is probably the most contentious portion of it, uh, and the beach, beach access and whatnot. But there is another whole piece to it. So, I, I would definitely be in favor of moving to February twelfth. I think that that's perfectly fine.
Counselor Blaze.
Um, I'd just like to understand what the significance of January twenty-ninth is.
Well, we had, uh, set up three additional meetings with the expectation that we would be able to, uh, cover the balance of the ground. Uh, Mr. Hall's point about, uh, uh, leaving some time for drafting is quite appropriate because that will take some time. He has managed all of the staff requirements as well as facilitator requirements. So, this has been, has placed a burden on our town manager. And he's done a really, uh, a superior job, uh, if you've seen how he's handled, uh, a rather intense subject. So, uh, leave, and some of the drafting, obviously, is going to fall to him again as far as putting, uh, a draft together. Uh, and as a consequence, I think the twelfth provides us with ample time to do a, uh, a truly thorough job. Uh, I think it's a, I think it's a prudent, uh, amendment, and I support it.
Excellent.
So, we're not going to bring this, see, I was, I was kind of under the impression that we were gonna bring this forward to the council, first meeting in February.
Or, or initially, yeah, initially.
Okay. I, I think-
So, we're gonna mo- we're gonna move that out when, one council meeting? Okay.
Correct. I didn't even think, like, Counselor Holbrook's point of, you know, m- my thought was just of trying to get all the meetings in and the information. But she has a really good point of the, the, the amount of literature that goes along with this is, is overwhelming. And I've only, I only get a portion of it. Um, so, I, I would think that it would be helpful to have them have more time to absorb it, um, find, wait, find things to back it up with. And so, I, I think that's a, that's a huge point. I just, yeah, I don't wanna see this rushed.
Go on the amendment.
Yeah, um, I was just gonna mention, if we, if we weren't for, if we weren't gonna, uh, put this amendment in, I had perfect faith in, uh, my manager Hall and Counselor Donovan to tell us and, uh, come back to us and tell us that they, uh, needed more time, which would be all right. But the, um, like you said, this, this'll cover it, um, for now, um. Oh. I, I, to respond to, uh, Counselor Blaze's- Oh, I'm sorry. -question. Yep. Uh, I would expect, we plan to work as, uh, rapidly as we can to wrap this matter up because it has involved a tremendous amount of intense effort by, uh, quite a number of people. And so, if we were to conclude it before the first meeting in February, we would be delighted to be able to present the report at that time.
Perfect.
Okay, any more comments, questions? Last time, okay. We, we have a, uh, we have to vote on the mo- we have a motion to amend. And you wanna read that? How about kinda read?
It was motioned by Counselor Holbrook. Seconded by Saint, uh, Counselor St. Clair to move the deadline from January twenty-ninth to February twelfth. Correct?
Okay, so, first, we're gonna vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Okay. Then we go back to order number fourteen oh seven, which has, uh, has a second- Right? Has amended. Motion has amended. All those in favor? Opposed? None? All right. Next on the agenda, I will start with, uh, standing and special committee reports. Counselor St. Clair.
Uh, I just wanted to say that Susan Winch of the, of the Scarborough Public Library, thirty-four years she's been with the Scarborough Public Library, which is just amazing to me. Um, she's retiring. So, they're having, um, a get-together for her at the library. Um, I have the contact information if anybody's interested in going. Um, it's, it's pretty neat to actually read all the things that she's done for the library and, and worked on and, um, been involved in, um, grant funding, public pro- I mean, it's just, it's pretty amazing what she's done. So, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we mentioned that. They have their, um, board meeting tomorrow night. I'm gonna try to get to that. Um, but there is a reception for her on January twenty-seventh, so it's kinda neat. Um, thirty-four years in the library for the town of Scarborough, which is very cool. Uh, the Scarborough, the Winterfest has been moved. I'm not sure if everybody saw that, but it's been warm here. It is bizarre. Um, and everything's melting. So, hopefully, in a couple of weeks, that was moved, I think it's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Correct? Saturday, the twenty-fifth. So, um, it's usually an incredible event. Um, great community services works really hard on that, um, and usually has a really good turnout. So, I would encourage people to bring your kids to that. Pretty cool. Uh, I think that's it for me for tonight.
Counselor Blaze.
Uh, there haven't been any committees meeting since the last meeting, so, no report.
Counsel Bennett.
First of all, I apologize for being late ahead of a bit of an emergency, which is taken care of. Um, the council, the committees that I'm on have not had meetings, uh, except for the commercial coastal waters. And there will be another meeting of them next month. And I'll have to speak with Chairman Sullivan as to policies and rules committee. If we already need a meeting, we'll have one. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Holbrook.
She's not there.
I thought she was leaning back on the stop. This way the Counselor Katrina.
Yeah.
Anything to report?
Yeah, uh, Conservation Commission, we're working on, uh, marsh migration projects, uh, which in essence, it doesn't mean the marsh is moving anywhere, like migrating like the birds. But, um, over time, uh, the boundaries of the marsh are gonna change and levels of the marsh, the water, whatever, the contours of the marsh will be changing. And we've had some, uh, state work on that. And what we're talking about now is how we can work with relevant town committees on impacts to infrastructure and zoning and whatever. Also, Long Range Planning Committee, uh, met and we discussed, um, we took away a contract zone off of Bigford Street. Um, we did, um, municipal capacity site law review work and looking at Agorum Road Development District, which is right next door to my house, actually. Um, so, I'm looking forward to working, uh, with that committee further. That's it for me.
Counselor Donovan. Uh, we've already had some comments on the ad hoc committee, but I will tell you that, uh, uh, it's a seven-member committee. Uh, only one person on the committee is expressing the, uh, uh, feelings of being rushed. Uh, I personally feel that when you have an intense subject, uh, uh, delay and procrastination are far more harmful than the intense effort you need to put in to, uh, uh, address the issue. Uh, I think the town would be very proud of the effort that has been put in by the committee members. Uh, it's really been stellar because there's been a substantial amount of material that has to have been reviewed, some of it very technical and scientific, uh, uh, which a number of people, very qualified people on the committee have put forward. Uh, and it's been the subject of some discussion. Uh, for myself, uh, there is also a public, uh, link on our town website now, uh, which affords members of the, uh, public to access materials, uh, to put their two cents in if they wanna, uh, send, uh, comments that are shared with the committee members. And we've also set up a bit of a library system in Mr. Hall's office so that all the materials that we see are also available to the public. Uh, and I would really encourage people to review it because when you do, you have your eyes opened as to what the nature of the problems are that we're addressing. And you start to understand why there is a problem here. So, uh, uh, I would, uh, I would encourage, uh, the community to do, to do that. For myself, uh, I will tell you that my goal is, uh, to assure the town is in conformance with the law while respecting the rights of dog owners and non-dog owners. Uh, and, which is to say, all the people in, in our town. And that's not an easy task under these circumstances. But it's the one we're charged with. Uh, it's the one we're going to, uh, produce, uh, a good result. And I have every expectation that when we're done, the town's gonna say, now that is an excellent proposal for a town-wide management of, uh, the dog ordinance. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to wrapping the matter up. I think, uh, we're on the right track and we're making progress. Thank you, Counselor Holbrook.
Um, real quickly, you have a couple of names from the appointments committee who met this evening. Uh, I will note that, um, as I'm posting these names, I did recuse myself. Um, I have a conflict. Uh, one of the appointments is for the Schaffes Conservation Commission, and my father is on that committee. So, I did recuse myself and, and did not vote. Um, but, uh, the appointments would like to, however, nominate, um, Terry Toomey, Robert Willett, and, um, David Green as a, uh, and move David Green from a first alternate to a full-voting member. Um, there's that. And, um, Housing Alliance, um, did not actually get a chance to meet earlier in the month at their regular date and time. So, they will be meeting Thursday, January twenty-third at six thirty P.M. Um, and I'm sure, um, I expect to hear an update about, um, Habitat and, and how that's going to move forward. Um, we are on the deadline for the Community Development Block Grant. So, we will need to either move forward with the project this summer or, um, consider some, some alternatives. Um, Historic Preservation will be meeting February fourth at six thirty. Uh, coming to you probably for the second meeting in February, um, popular date, will be a culmination of their research, which is the first phase, which was identifying what's even left for historic properties and buildings in town. Um, so what you will be receiving at that meeting will be the shortlist of, of what's here, what's, what's significant, what's, you know, fairly endangered of losing. Um, and then they'll be soliciting feedback from us as to where we would like to go with these things, um, from a council perspective, if we are interested in, you know, trying to reach out to homeowners, um, if we wanna create programs, if we wanna look at, you know, if we have some, some kind of an ordinance or whatnot. Um, so again, they'll be soliciting some feed- feedback from you guys. And there's something else that I forgot, so it'll wait till next time.
Finance next Tuesday?
Oh, yes, yeah, that, that was it. Finance, we'll have a reverse meeting next Tuesday. Uh, and we should have, uh, year-to-date information, where, where we are, so. Um, and we'll have, I think we'll have a schedule for our upcoming, um, meeting schedule. That's when we start to meet on a weekly basis to go through the budget.
Okay, um, as far as, uh, I was unable to attend last night.
Transportation Committee did meet last night. Um, they are nearly complete their work, looking at, uh, a host of different recommended changes and improvements to pedestrian safety at the Oak Hill intersection, which was their chief or, or first task that's been given to them. Uh, the final piece involves, uh, understanding the high-crash, uh, locations proximate to that intersection. And not surprisingly, that those are a bit delicate in that it potentially affects business and property owners in terms of correcting those situations. So, we're working through that. I know the committee would very much like to, uh, provide a, an update to the council in person. Uh, and I'll work with, uh, Council Chair Sullivan to do that sometime as soon as the schedule allows. But they're very close. Uh, it's equally important, I think, to bring this package of changes, should the council be interested in moving forward with one or many, uh, it would dovetail nicely with your budget process. So, we'll-
Right.
-make sure we do it before budget's done.
Okay, and that'll dovetail right into your report.
Yes, a couple of quick, uh, items on, uh, from my report tonight. Um, Project Race, who's a long time been our partner with Fuel Assistance Program. They do many, many great things in this community, one of which is the Fuel Assistance Program. Uh, the partnership is essentially, we've done, um, some of the fundraising, if you will, and beating of the bushes and, um, financial management, whereas they have done more of the fuel assistance, meeting with clients and allocating resources. And I'm very comfortable with those roles. Uh, we really have not formally kick-started the program this year in terms of the town's involvement. They, however, have been quite involved and continue to meet with clients and provide assistance. Uh, we are obviously in the middle of heating season, and they, they would like to come and address council, and they're looking for, uh, a similar partnership going forward. So, administratively, all the systems are in place. I work with Steffi Cox, the Director of Project Race, and perhaps have her at your next meeting just for a two or three or five-minute update on the project. Uh, town website, I'm pleased to announce, after about a year in process, we'll be going live with a brand-new, uh, website, total new look, um, very much enhanced functionality. Uh, for those that have spent any time on our website, there's a ton of content, but it's very poorly designed and hard to find. I'd be the first to admit. Uh, I think you'll find this is, uh, is much better designed and, and much better, uh, to find the information. We're, uh, we have a, a go-live date of February tenth. And as part of this, we're also gonna adopt a new URL. Um, right now, our website has, it's kind of a mouthful. It's not something that rolls off your tongue or comes immediately to mind. So, we'll be going with wwwscarbromaine.org. We think that'll be a lot easier for people to understand. Um, and as soon as the site is ready for inspection, I'll provide a link to you all and you can get an inside peek. But, uh, you'll see some publicity we'll do in the press and such, um, around early February. Also, uh, workers' comp savings. Uh, every year, we get a rundown of the savings we get through our affiliation with the Maine Work, uh, Maine Municipal Workers' Comp, um, Trust. And this year, we received a dividend just over eight, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars. We also received a two-thousand-dollar grant, uh, reductions of about eighteen thousand dollars in, uh, as a result of our safety programs. And also, they provide loss control services that they assign a dollar value to, all totals over fifty-two thousand dollars in savings on our workers' comp costs. So, um, I mention that because it's a lot of money. And I assure you, it's, uh, it's re- it's directly related to dedication on the part of my staff to be committed to safety. It's not something that's easy. It's something, um, we're trying to make it a matter of routine and customary, uh, but it takes commitment. And I have departments doing tremendous work in that regard, and this is how it pays off. Uh, lastly, EcoMaine, every year, has all their member communities, uh, able to nominate an individual business or group in our community, uh, for their commitment to environmental sustainability. It's totally self-generated, uh, the nomination forms are out, it's a quick turnaround, uh, they're due by January twenty-fourth, so I mention that to the council and to anyone else. If there's an individual, a group, or business, uh, that you feel is committed to environmental sustainability, get in touch with me and I'll be pleased to help put an application together. And that's it. As was mentioned, Winterfest is, is, uh, been postponed to the twenty-fifth, rain date is the twenty-sixth, and the forecast looks as though we might get a little snow, so let's hope for that. Thank you.
Councilor member comments. Councilor Sinclair.
Uh, I just wanna say, (cough) we're still, I, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but myself is still getting a large number of, um, emails pertaining to the dogs, um, on the beach issue, and I, I just want people to understand that at this point, personally, I don't feel like I wanna weigh in on that until after the committee comes back, um, with their recommendations. I think we have to, um, let them do the job that they've been assigned without having to feel, um, any additional pressure from myself. Um, I know we're all anxious to get those recommendations so that we can move forward. Um, there's a lot of stuff going on in this town, um, and rightfully so, we're spending a large amount of time on this issue, um, but there are other things that definitely require our attention, uh, especially with the budget coming up. We are all assigned a, a large amount of, um, subcommittees, and a lot of those committees have a lot of things going on, and so, um, there's a lot of good things going on in this town. I know that the dog issue has been a contentious issue for a lot of people, um, I do believe that we're moving in the right direction with that. I know, um, everybody that's on that committee, um, is working extremely hard to try to come up with, um, a resolution that's, um, fair for everybody in Scarborough, um, all sides of the issue. So I hope that, you know, that process can be respected and, and we can let them do the job that they need to be doing, um, and I am very much looking forward to, um, the recommendation from that group.
Councilor Blaze.
Um, I'd just like to thank, uh, Chairman Sullivan and Councilor Katerina for going up to Augusta and fighting our battle. I thought the meeting (cough) last week with the legislative delegation was a very good meeting. They, I think they heard what we were saying, and they told us their story, but, I don't know, we'll have to see what happens. But a lot of, a lot has gotta be done at the state level because everything that goes on at the state level at this point in time is starting to affect us, and we can't afford astronomical increases in our property taxes anymore. Enough is enough.
Thank you. Councilor Benedict.
Uh, I'd just like to address the dog situation because, like all the other councilors, I've gotten the telemail pro and con, believe it or not, (cough) and for those of them not familiar with the computer, I don't need capitalization in bold plus five or, I don't even know how you do it, in italics and different colors and blockage and... You have a message, you have a question, just ask it. As far as, uh, replying to them, if you wanna reply or need a reply, that's fine. Otherwise, I believe that we've got a committee in, in place that is fine, uh, and one thing I learned in business years ago, and you might disagree with it, but I don't think we all need to micromanage what the Ad Hoc Committee is doing. Helping them is fine, cutting them down is not, uh, and I don't understand why everybody thinks the, the deck is stacked, there's four, four, the, against the dogs, if, I mean, it, it almost looks like for, for a town that doesn't like the lottery, they're trying to figure out the numbers, none of which do I find accurate. I think there's about, there's probably one on there that I would, that, that for. There's nobody had bet against or speak for, and I think we should keep that in reverence because it's getting, getting to be a little out of hand. It's the, almost the exa, every email is about eighty percent the same, and I would assume from the address, the path, it's getting larger and larger, there's a lot of people that read it or don't, and I'd just like to keep it in line and let the committee do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Katerina.
Yes, thank you, um, I know I told a lot of people that I will be available to meet with folks, and I'm setting up my first open office hours on Saturday, January twenty-fifth, from nine-thirty to eleven A.M., and I will be down to the Engine One at Black Point because I do wanna get out around in the various neighborhoods, and I'm gonna start with Fire Department, Engine One, Black Point. Please bring your thoughts, concerns, ideas, and your kids or grandkids because I've talked to the staff down there, making sure we have folks to show off the fire trucks and whatever else kids would like to see. So, uh, please come down, uh, again, Saturday, January twenty-fifth, I'll be there at nine-thirty, from nine-thirty to eleven. And I wanna thank, in particular, Chairman Sullivan, he did a lot of work on that long draft I read today, he and, uh, Tom Hall, um, so thank you for doing that, putting that together, uh, for, to bring up to the legislature. Uh, I wanna continue to thank everyone who's giving their time to serve on the Ad Hoc Committee, um, and those p, interested citizens who are involved, and I do get a lot of emails, and I have to admit, I'm one of those people, I feel like I should at least answer and say, "I got your email," so I apologize if I've missed any, um, but at least I will get back to you and say, "I got your email, thank you very much," um, and please know I am reading them. Um, but again, you know, it is, I, I'm looking forward to letting the Ad Hoc Committee do their, do their work, uh, and Tom sort of stole this, but that's okay. I was gonna mention about Remember Your Neighbors, Project Grace right now is collecting money, uh, for heating assistance for folks. The situation's pretty dire, as you can well imagine, with the recent very, very cold weather that we had. I don't know about you, but my furnace was running overtime and ate a lot of oil, and there are people in this town for whom fuel assistance is essential. They're choosing between fuel and food, and I'm not kidding, so please keep that in mind.
Councilor Donovan.
Uh, I've actually had, uh, uh, a couple of, uh, meetings that were, were pretty exciting in matters that, uh, I have a real interest in, uh, and I really enjoyed attending them. Uh, Tom and I, (cough) participated in the Energy Committee, uh, meeting this past week, and I went to my first one a couple of weeks ago, just starting to get to know the people. Uh, there's a very high, uh, professional knowledge of energy issues on this committee, so from a community, uh, a contribution point of view, this is a really good group. Uh, we are, uh, and again, Judy Roy is on that group, again, contributing, so, uh, you know, uh, my hat goes off to her public service. Uh, we're dealing with an issue, and, and Tom could tell you a great deal more about it than I, but, uh, that, uh, a solar panel issue on, uh, some of our public buildings. And the reason those never go anywhere is because there's no tax credit for a municipality, but, uh, in recent years, there have been developed some plans that, uh, allow for some imaginative ways for investors to lease solar panel projects to towns so that they can get discounted pricing on their electricity and then buy at a bargain purchase the equipment once the tax credit runs out. Uh, we're moving it forward, uh, Tom's working on it, uh, has a good handle on it, as does the committee. Uh, we met with some people who are making this proposal, it is unique, it's innovative, it's kind of exciting because it, it means where, when you get the power, you're off the grid. That's, you're no, you're no longer, uh, having to buy electricity, you're buying it from yourself. So, that, that project, we also held the meeting at the DPW Building, and I tell you, the more time I spend with Mike Shaw, the more I am impressed by this gentleman's control of his, his department. Uh, they are pursuing some economies, we, we did a, a tour to look at energy economies and efficiencies, and, and you go through, and they are really on top of it. I, uh, uh, I had made a, a goal of, of pursuing that sort of issue, and I was just, uh, very impressed, in awe really, of, of how sophisticated they are. The other thing I did this week was I attended with Tom again, as well as Dan Bacon, the Director of, of Planning, and Brian Longstaff, our new Code Enforcement Officer, the, uh, Flood, uh, Math Conference held by FEMA in Portland, uh, and there are a lot of people who are very interested in this because this is, it's a complicated process, it's got more questions than answers at this point. Uh, the thing that I think I can assure people is, there are gonna be public hearings, uh, so that people can have their questions answered. Uh, I understand the process well enough, uh, to be dangerous, uh, and, uh, and will be happy to try and assist our town officials who are really gonna take the lead, but obviously it's nice to be able to talk to somebody who maybe would, you know, be available to spend a half an hour on the line talking to you about flood management issues, so, uh, that was another one, that was, uh, was pretty good. And lastly, uh, Scarborough Leaders Person of the Year, Ron Forrest. One of my first contacts just seven or eight years ago when he moved here was putting in a new fence, and he came out, and it was a pleasure to meet that gentleman, so I just wanted to give him my congratulations.
Could I just dovetail on Bill, I, I fail to mention, uh, the, the meeting that we attended, um, the PowerPoint, which contains a lot of the details of process and dates, uh, we do have, and it's available on our website, so I encourage folks to take a peek at that, and that will at least give you a sense of where we're going over the next several months.
Councilor Holbrook.
Yes, um, so, I do have, um, the unfortunate list, if you will. So, uh, as standard practice, we like to offer our condolences to the families of those that have been slept us, and, um, tonight we actually have, um, one that stands out, Clarence Alquist passed away, as many of you may know, that is our former Vice Chair, uh, former Chair's father, Ronald Alquist. Some background on Clarence is that he, um, was resident of the Maine Veterans Home, and he did serve in, um, World War Two, as did, uh, my grandmother and all of the siblings. Um, he was actually a reserve, um, PD officer here in Scarborough for a while, um, he worked for the Scarborough School Department through the Maintenance Department, and, um, kind of a fun fact, although like many of the family, he was a hunter and, and went, you know, and went looking for deer and all those fun things, he was eighty-nine years old when he shot his first moose. So, that's kind of a fun thing. Um, of course, the other, um, fairly common name that you might recognize is Fay Merrill, also Fay Moulton, um, she worked for a long time for the Scarborough School Department, um, she was a member of the Pythian Sisters, um, Eastern Star and, and Scarborough Grange, and is, um, was the mother of our police chief, Robert Moulton. Um, we also have on the list, um, our condolences for the families of the following, which is Dale John Blackie Junior, Robert Brayley, Barbara Chiazo, Edward Francis Cogswell, John Dickman, Richard Fisk, Fred Flaherty, who, um, is also a townie, he's, uh, was a lobsterman for a long time down at Pine Point, um, again, he was one of our war veterans, he served in the U.S. Navy for, um, World War Two and the Korean Conflict, um, Robert Lindquist, Janet Mishud, Barbara Morin, Martin Nappi, Janet Nichols, Deborah Palmer, who's also actually, um, that was a lifetime Scarborough resident as well, um, William Nan, Nathaniel Rhodes, Beverly Grafton Sloat, and Donald Witten, who is actually, was also a Scarborough lifetime resident, um, who served in the Armed Forces as well as very active in the American Legion and over at Fish and Games. So again, um, send our condolences out, um, to the families of, of those that have passed. I guess I will chime in on, um, of course, there's always dogs is kind of pertinent lately. Um, I did write a reply, um, I, I did receive the email, um, asking questions, um, I could not quite write them fast enough, um, but asking each individual counselor in there to, um, answer a series of questions, um, like I said, I, I did form a reply, I, I won't read it all, but, um, as far as the quick list goes, um, for myself, I, again, I can only speak for myself as a counselor, but, um, when we had our workshop meeting, I was clear at the time and understood that for myself, that we were gonna task the town manager with setting up the duties and, and, you know, different things, and that we were putting it more upon him to pick, you know, some names and putting some faith and trust into him on having a diverse group. Uh, as far as whether I felt I had opportunity to vet that, I feel that the time for me to do so, if I had a question or concern about the names that we've added to this committee, was at the time of our last council meeting that I was Acting Chair. If I felt that these people were inappropriate or would be biased or in any other form, I would've said so at the time. Certainly for myself, I felt that, um, although it was not, to me, I did not look at this as a stacked community in either direction. This isn't just about beaches or just about fish and wildlife, it is a bigger, fuller, more whole package, and so I was not interested in having solely just the fish and wildlife folks on that committee. I liked that there was somebody who, um, I'm gonna throw Glenna Chabot under the bus, she's had a lot of experience with outreach, education, she was very active down in Higgins Beach, because it's outreach across the town that I'm interested in, not just the beaches and the bluebirds. I liked that there was a biologist, um, I liked that this is, again, this is a whole dogs' package issue for me, um, so five of the seven members are dog owners, um, and certainly we had a new counselor, um, who was not part of the proceeding beforehand, um, and certainly brings a legal background and understand a working knowledge of legalese and all those little things like may and shall that changes how an ordinance, you know, is, can be enforced. So, I'm certainly comfortable with the folks, um, again, if I had an issue, I would've said so at the time of the meeting. As far as if I feel, you know, if this is, um, some kind of a charade, I don't, I truly look forward to seeing what this committee has to say, I'm looking for, um, a multitude of answers from them, um, across the board, um, as to, I'm trying to go through this list, sorry, so give me a second. As far as a counselor meeting privately with a committee member, I don't have an issue with that, and, you know, I meet with a lot of people on a regular basis, um, it's realistically an accusation that I, I can't answer to because that counselor's not me, so I, I can only speak for myself. But again, I certainly have no hesitation or, you know, reason that I wouldn't meet with an individual of this community. There are a multitude of issues, especially money, so depending on what your committee assignments might be that year, you might have lots of meetings with lots of different folks. And I guess, well, you know, to wrap it up as far as revisiting this issue, um, and I did say this in my return email, revisiting the dogs' issue, um, I'm gonna go back to the heart and the crux of it, which was a town-wide leash ban failed at voter referendum, and for me, that's the point of this committee. I, I would like to hear from them, just like I do with a multitude of things, you know, I have been on finance for a couple of years, certainly budgets fail at referendum, our brand-new intermediate school that we're building failed twice in this community, we didn't just walk away and say, "We're not gonna build a new school," it comes back, it might be different in the package, it goes back out again, but it comes back and it still has to get dealt with. it still has to get dealt with. It does, you know, just like the school, it didn't change the fact that the roof was falling down and there's asbestos and there's mold, and we didn't just walk away and say, "We're not going to fix it." We tweaked it, changed it, sent it back out. Um, I view the work of this committee no different, I look forward to it, um, and I hope that you come with some wonderful, well-accepted recommendations. That's it for me.
Okay, um, I'd like to send my condolences out to everybody that was on, um, Councilor Holbrook's list, um, and the two that I know the best would be the Alquist family and the Moulton family. Um, my condolences go out to them. As far as, um, the, um, the issues that, uh, Council Holbrook touched on, as the Chair and the Vice Chair, um, we had very little to do, um, with the committee. Um, I didn't, I did not vet committee members, uh, Councilor Holbrook didn't vet, uh, committee members, and like I've said in my emails, if any counselor did vet, uh, members of the committee, I was unaware of that. Um, to say that a, um, that a counselor and a committee member are meeting with each other, um, I'm the liaison to the Transportation Committee, I vote on the Transportation Committee also, I, uh, meet with members of the Transportation Committee, so I, I really don't see the difference in the two like that. I'm sure that there's, um, members of that committee that meet with each other also on the outside, and I do find it a little disturbing that it's known that a counselor and a committee member have met eight times. That tells me somebody's watching these people, um, the committee members or the counselor, so I find that a little disturbing. But I think what we need to do is we need to give time for the committee, um, we've extended the time, the committee to do its work and bring its recommendations to the council. Then we'll know which direction the council will go in, whether to accept some or maybe none of the recommendations. It's a lot of work, but it's, when it comes right down to it, it's the committee of the council, and the council decides on whether to set, accept or not to accept, or what parts they do. And I think I'll leave my comments at that point tonight, and, uh, call for a motion to adjourn. Come on. All in favor? Opposed?[1776.22]